Yo la. Master of Ceremony. Boom. What? Just don't touch the microphone. Nope. Don't touch the microphone. Shoot. I'm the, I'm the... Y'all, y'all are worse than my kids. Idiots. It's already posted. It's on YouTube. Yes. My name is Bobby Freeman.
Right, I call this meeting back into session at 9:36. Alright, um, we're gonna go back to our I D sheet. Discuss and consider possible action concerning the 2017-2018 audit submitted by Donald.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Donald, it's a favor. You got a question? To green?
Yeah.
Hello? I'm the first one to like thank those mayor council for having me on the audit. Uh, we very appreciate them. Also want to thank you for your patience. This audit did very light. I do take responsibility for part of that. We would have been able to give you this year variety audit. That has cost me about six weeks. So we also just wanted to point out, this audit is up. Um, we get three different sets of financial statements from office that we had prepared. So we glad that that adds a lot of extra time. Normally if it takes two, three or four visits, this year it's like four. This is the audit. It was definitely a big question tonight. We kind of laid by the way though, uh, earlier in the meeting. So when you met with, uh, if you are arguing you had an eight X. Uh, do you have your reports with you? It's turn to page three. Five year first bullet point every city net position increase sixty-nine thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars as a result of district operations. This included a eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand twenty-dollar net position decrease in the general fund at four transfers. And a nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollar net increase in proprietary fund which is going to see water and sewer for four years. A little bit of a fine ego status mission here. There's a position increase heading. So the city of Harvard overall again is almost clear. It was thirty-two thousand nineteen had right at a seventy-thousand dollar net. But the city park is kind of unique in that electricity you can't account. So your electricity fund gives you a huge amount of revenue. Private area fund that makes almost a million dollar net. Nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand. And that also eight-hundred-and-nineteen thousand that was transferred to the general fund, the general fund from the, from the election. Yes. So that's why I had bullet point there. The general fund ended the year with a fund balance of two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand forty-six dollars on a governmental fund basis, which was a two-thousand-six-hundred-and-fourty-three dollar decrease. Government fund is just a general fund and it takes out depreciation, but also takes out loan rate. That is another form of county in this case we could afford in a governmental audit. Um, third bullet point told revenues in the city were three million one hundred ninety-five thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars total cost. The lost state property programs was three million one-twenty-five-sixty-fourty. She is there for stairs right at seven thousand dollars net. I'm now to go to page six. Your net position is governmental audit for balance sheet. So this is the balance sheet for the city park. Again, government. My business electricity waters. Uh, we do have two thousand eighteen and seventeen side by side. Um, various purposes. Current number assets on the general fund, that's simply property checking, savings, D Ds. Based on beginning all bank accounts for the general fund. Then also we're going to include your receivables, which includes the property tax issue and subs tax issue. Uh, for two thousand eighteen, you had four-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars. That's up from the four-hundred-and-nineteen thousand thousand five, so you go up about forty-eight thousand in the general fund. Three assets. Uh, your capital assets, that's your residential assets. It'll be buildings, cars, computers, vehicles, and then you can call your residential assets. Nine-hundred thousand two-twenty-four down from nine-ninety-six to eight-thirteen. That ninety-six thousand dollar decreases on appreciation. Total assets in the general fund for one million three sixty-eight two-twenty-one down from one million four sixteen three-eighteen to about forty-eight thousand dollars. Preferred assets and resources that extend from K M R S pension plan. February effect, city park with the annual forty-six thousand dollar credit down, down to seven thousand six-eighteen. Current liabilities, I think like the council pay, like how to pay, also current portion of the loans. You have a few loans in the general fund, not a lot of real estate balance. Seventy thousand three sixty-eight after nine-one thousand three ninety-two. Long-term liability, extra loans that are extended beyond one year, one-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand over here. Um, this is slightly, slightly increased here. Total liabilities, two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand seven sixteen down from two-seventy-five five-fourteen. The third info the resources again, that's a pension number from K M R S. Seventy-five thousand six eighty-eight up from thirteen thousand five sixty-two. Your net position, Academy Network, so the investment capital assets, that's kind of like the network, eight fifty, which is down from eight twelve six fifty-six. Restricting from debt service, that's like long payments in the next fiscal year. Forty-one thousand six eighty-eight down from forty-three eighty-four. Unrestricted, that's free and clear, so that's always important number. Money you have no, no enclosures, no restrictions, no reservations. Hundred-and-ninety-two thousand eight thirty-one down to top there from the two thirty-seven oh fifty-nine. So total net position for city park of the general fund, nine-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand eight hundred five, down about a hundred thousand of the one million ninety-three, five ninety-nine in prior year. And of course you're building side by side, because that's the bigger electricity water and sewer fund, a lot better numbers here. The current number asset, there that checking that's your saving sheet in the electricity water sewer fund. Also best market tickles, that's going to be your electricity water sewer and also private services. One million two hundred two thousand four hundred and seven, growth of increase from that five-nine-one, five hundred nine one thousand two eighty, that's almost six hundred thousand. Kind of looked out of line. And then why? Boom. You had a loan of five hundred thousand in the electricity water sewer fund that was deposited in your operating account. So that increased your cash account down in, in that account by five hundred thousand. And the buyer number six hundred thousand dollar increase there. Your capital assets, one million four hundred sixteen thousand six seventy, down from one million four forty-eight four eight fifty-three twenty-four thousand dollar increase. So actually added about two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand in assets in the water, water electricity and sewer fund depreciation, about two fifty-five. No, I'm sorry, two-seventy-nine, so you had a twenty-four thousand dollar decrease. So what was the second electricity water sewer, two million six hundred nineteen thousand up to two million thirty-two, again I brought it six hundred thousand, five hundred thousand that being the... That other loan increases. Hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand thousand nine one, that's twenty-eight year time. Long-term bondholdings, one million three ninety-four three sixty-three, that's up from one million fifty-one seven seventy-six. So you're up home at three hundred and forty-three thousand there. But it's five hundred thousand dollar loan added, then you'll get a principal payment on your existing loans, so that, that would give that three hundred thousand dollar increase. Total liability is one million five eighty-one nine fifty-four, up to one million one seventy-one five eighty-four, where it's ten thousand dollar increase again, with five hundred thousand that been from the general fund. The first of those plus an increase in the actual. We have good visual spectrum. And if you want to look at your law some more detail, again, that one page thirty-two, there is a review. So I think Mr. Ron did want to see a schedule of that two hundred minutes. The news. I don't know, let's go ahead and pull back, look at all that. You know, let's look on, start on page thirty-three. Okay, I did go through your minutes, I could not find. Crazy, yeah. Crazy how that happened. Okay, look, again, from the audit purpose, but, um, those four, where, where's all the money? So you're going to, it's something that's not properly authorized, that's kind of a little bit official. We, we have loan documents, we put it in your financials. If they're, um, they're looking about the middle of the page where it says, "Huang's Government Capital Corporation, five hundred thousand dollars." And it's already March thirty, beginning December six, two thousand seventeen, that is also when it was funded in for banking. So we know for sure that is Huang's Home in December. They say that it's January of two thousand seventeen. Definitely, that's when our loan documents married it, and that's also when your policy is there in the new account. Um, again, if, if matures March thirty, two thousand seventeen, you have annual payments of fifty-nine thousand nine fifty-seven seventy-five, with an interest rate of three point nine seven. Sure you make, um, March thirty, forty-seven. So. Hey, you guys, hey, did I get all the kids in here? Well, yeah, it was yours, man. And what one payment was made here to this year, uh... Uh, fifty-three thousand six sixty-six, that's on page three.
Did you hear Dr. Butler said, uh, it was secured by eleven years, like, I've been holding up?
No. Yeah, I mean, okay, I'm sorry, is that a repression? Uh, this may have to, I just threw a bullet point, but would you all reach out to me? Do you have any complications? Well, I, I have, uh, instructions. Yeah, that's, that's what we're got. Did, did we actually see the loan documents itself?
I had trouble with it, they were not with my loan. I was curious if it was actually, that's a more accurate, or didn't be curious about the, uh, electric fund.
Uh, I don't know. Okay, that's right. Okay, it was deposited in the, uh, the private area fund operating account. Now, we, we have one thing. That's all I got. Okay, we have come back over to your, your balance sheet. Okay, so the loans in the private area fund were one million nine hundred and four. We got interest there, so your net position, network, you have proprietary fund. Your net investment capital was one hundred fifty thousand four-one, or a hundred fifty thousand down to forty-one. Why is that down so much? That loan gave. Only one for that is your assets, timeshare loans. So that loan did not go to assets, it went to cash. So that's why we're down to a hundred and fifteen, down to forty-one. In prior year, because that's our management cash account, not a cash level. Uh, debt service, a hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred. Oh, yeah, and that is actually a mistake. I will fix that in that two hundred tomorrow. If you look over on page thirty-four, I bet the property see current portion. It should be a hundred fifty-two thousand five forty-seven, so I will change that to send that back. Uh, so are you saying we have loan out five hundred thousand dollars, you have one document? Yes. One big document. Five hundred thousand dollar one. It doesn't give us a description whatsoever?
You have, you have a document here, Clark.
And there, there should be an actual loan agreement somewhere. Uh, again, remember for the audit, I mean, we're, we're not dealing with labels, we're dealing with numbers. So I mean, we have this number. So we have gone for a loan or a bank thing, you have to sell it for. You don't just take it and clap your hands, right?
I don't know, we have to talk with it. How, I don't know, we're there, but.
My purpose was time for things, or you have, you have a loan in it, and then this time. But is that money still in our account now?
Yeah, it was, it was.
It was, or was?
It was.
Oh, and that's all explaining, that's why you had that big increase in your current.
That's also the same, where our, all our utilities, all that is going into any of our. So we just say the money in there is from this level or the property.
Well, we know, we know, we do know it is from that, that loan, because we matched it. The date and the deposit, you tell them that, or not, I mean, correct. Well, wait, I don't know where. We don't know where, where it is today, no, but I know it's September thirty, two thousand eighteen, seven years. Right. And well, well, see, we, we would go through October, two thousand eighteen. Yes, sir.
I mean, I've been here like that, and I mean, I can drive this five hundred thousand, we have a blue and put it, talk about this. Because, uh, you know, who in Frank's area, that, because they need to breathe the pipe and typically, the, the streets. I mean, both of us will be home. We kind of need for water.
Water and sewer, or just like?
There is. Were you, were you, that's a very, that's a, uh, over the head? So which that's a budget?
Ooh, some of that.
Thousand dollars in the monthly money back.
I, I can tell you what the numbers are, I can tell you your type of money.
If you act normal, you'd see that, 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 that. Or the normal, the thing, or if that's a bit above, like? Would that be a red flag or something?
Um, I don't understand. But we can remember, as you're moving on.
This, this one I don't know, but this is very, yeah. G C C will not allow that kind of money to the city, not having documentation, according to the resolution, but, but the attorney. And so I'll read out to them, okay, documentation, they should definitely be somewhere, we need to deploy the presented. Yeah, and quite honestly, if I ask that question initially, because that's more than likely out that this goes.
Right. Our, our focus is on, we, for everything, that is for, you know, and for everything from where that you. You know, for our purposes, that, that's all.
Right.
That's all, yeah. Okay, so I was very good in the private area fund, seven hundred thirty-nine thousand. Again, the difference between that five hundred thousand has two years, not two years. So a hundred and seventy-five thousand net position, I went just watch over about twenty-eight thirty-seven thousand. Uh, now let's go to page seven. Changes in net positions, this is the profit loss or interest rate for the city park. Again, you're really wanting to use, you know, from this, I think, what you're. Uh, two thousand eighteen and seventeen, seven, 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 general fund. Your charges for services, that's basically your permits, which you take that off for city sixteen thousand one forty-nine, down to nineteen seventy-seven. Uh, finding the board's support, your electric report fee, Thomas, sunny boat years, one hundred fifty-nine thousand, one hundred fifty-eight. Uh, recent contributions, one million five hundred and thirty-six, up to one million fifty-two. Your property tax revenues were up, two hundred and eighty-three thousand one fifty, up to two sixty-six one eighty-three, you're above seventy thousand there. Sales tax, that's a down, this is a little bit, a hundred thirteen thousand, maybe one. Down to a hundred twenty thousand, that's a score. Ranch out space, twenty-one thousand six sixteen, down to twenty-two thousand, sustained about five to six hundred pieces. Interest income, two hundred three, two hundred and six dollars per claim. Your net income down, eleven thousand six twenty-three, down for eight thousand nine forty-eight. Transfers, big number here, I'll close, I'm pointing out the electricity water sewer does, private fund, general fund, eight-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars was transferred from general, uh, I'm sorry, from what? Electricity water sewer, general. Six hundred forty thousand in prior year, so if you want to particularly hear that's a big one. Total revenues in the general fund are one million four twenty-seven four ten, up from one million three eighty-eight nine one, but remember you got those big transfers in there. Your actual general fund revenue were six hundred eight thousand, up from five hundred ninety-eight thousand prior year, so small increase. Your general government expenses, six hundred sixty-three thousand, up from about forty-four, so you're up about a hundred seventy-five thousand. Their public safety, that's your poison fire, about sunny boat years, three hundred three thousand, down to six. Core expenses, a hundred twenty-one thousand, um, down from a hundred thirty-one, about ten thousand dollar decrease there. Public works, that's your streams, two hundred seventy-five thousand, up to two seventy-eight, about the same there, slight decrease. Uh, consumer recreation, that's your parks and operations, hundred twenty-seven thousand nine hundred seventy-four. Annual signed debt, four thousand two seventy-six, up to fifteen twenty-two. So total expenses in the general fund were one million four hundred six from seven hundred one, up to about two hundred thirty thousand from one million two hundred and sixty-two. So your change in net positions, negative, that loss of sixty-eight thousand, but compared to thirty-seven thousand three eighty-eight loss in prior years, so about thirty-one thousand, um, for force in prior year. Still, once you get in that position, almost three thousand. And business side activity, this is electricity water sewer, two thousand nineteen, two million five hundred eighty-six thousand one forty-five in service revenue. Uh, big increase from the two million, two seventy-three, seven eighty-five, so you're up three hundred thirteen thousand in private area fund revenues. Uh, no break written last year, a hundred dollars in just both years. As I mentioned, transfer eight nineteen to fifty-nine to general, forty. So core revenue after your transfers, one million seven sixty-seven one eighty-eight, up from one million six eighty-nine, one fifty-nine. Fire insurance expenses, for additional, one million six twenty-nine, four sixty-nine, down to four. One million six thirty-three. Eight fifty-three, so change in that position. After transfers, one hundred thirty-eight thousand five hundred and ten net income, compared to fifty-six thousand, six hundred and forty, about eighty thousand dollar, uh, in eighteen, this company. All numbers that are at the time, I'm just guessing. I'm going to worry about the long issue of, like. And I say, the internal control, I think the same way, but that we can just compare to each other's. Is that correct?
I got a book in the air, except they are already.
All of them. Mr. Ron didn't get that one. We should have posted. Forty-eight, forty-nine, the general fund, they all poured in that. I said, your, your revenues, Rex, you have quite a bit too, so your total revenue is six hundred eleven thousand, not before you do. So you're getting about the hundred and thirty thousand more revenues. From your general fund budget, your actual results, or, or? What do you think, what do you think cost that was? Uh, apparently more high. And yet, uh, general government expenses were way above, what was the budget, five hundred eighty-four thousand, or two sixty-six? Three hundred sixty-seven thousand dollar increase. Um, also way over in public works. So what was that difference? We're getting a thousand dollars. Uh, see, you were over budget in the, just general government expenses, about three hundred sixty-six. Public works, and public, mostly in public works? No, no, that's just general, you know. So what did you say about works? Other works was also over budget, five hundred fifty thousand. Was that, that was your streams? Was that, is this what, four hundred thirty-eight five forty-two over budget? Yes. For the F R? Yes. And then, I would say, did you want to look at water sewer real quick? It's on page four, page forty-eight. What we have. I'm supposed to, you were four hundred thirteen thousand over, that's it, that's good, of course, with the biggest, that's being electricity. Electricity with one million three hundred sixty thousand four hundred forty-one dollars, an increase in traffic. Well, yeah, that, that's your income, which was three hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars over budget. Uh, your costs were actually under budget. You budgeted eight eighty-five for electric power, which spent eighty-fourteen. Okay, out of that, nine thirty, something thousand dollars hasn't gone. Five hundred fifty, other time, so much. Five fifty. Yeah. That's great. There's all kinds of things.
I think I'm looking at this. Uh, Captain approved the, uh, audit and order before from Mr. Alford. Say, is this the way it's coming?
What are we talking? I, uh, I need the management representative to say, hey, wait, I'm supposed to turn you all over. All right, and have the mayor found. Magic, let's, let's start again. Management representation, I think. I think that will. Yes, yeah, yeah, I think he's sort of correct, you're, um, you're restricted, uh, debt service in the, in the private. We don't, we don't ever. They, they have to check. Your, your most important, yeah, for, for me, for the people that, that audit me, uh, yeah. An hour ago. Well, I need a second. I'm there. I'm there. And I should pass you, you have?
Yeah, I agree.
I had to do, yeah.
Look, we got one thumbs up. Somebody gave us a thumbs up.
Oh, we know that's off.
We're watching it live on YouTube, they gave us a thumbs up.
Yeah, but I think it, it's all I was going.
Okay. Alright, so we'll go on to, uh, actions on executive session.
Is it on?
It will be. On my personal YouTube channel.
Alright, sorry, I have six. Action, action on executive session.
I think he was, that's, that's.
Take action, if any, on that.
Give it a lumps. No, it doesn't have. It did good.
You mentioned, it just bears the violation of city policy, did features.
Yeah, well, that's what happened.
About here, seven.
Neither one of them say, no one.
On paper? Four, five, alright. I'm in favor that, yes, you can. Just, I left it off, we don't want to say it for hours, so. So, I'm beat. Take action, if any, on the review of. So, I'm, be, take action, if any, on the review of Shawna, you can. On favor? Five, in favor, that that's unanimous, please. Take action, if any, on applications by office clerk. Second up? On favor? Five in favor, that motion passes unanimously, unanimous, please. All right, um, in executive session, we also discussed, uh, the actual, um, district officer, officer, like, in Johnson, um, who is that, officer, our counsel, and I'll take the action. Yes, sir. Oh, I don't, I don't necessarily, to be honest, the council's made their decision.
No, no action.
Correct. Yes, sir. I apologize, that, that is the current stance of the, of the city. Okay, um, item number seven, insurance items. I, I let, they won't, did you buy some, say something else? But, what, in future meeting, it's not the, the subject burger in this, this, with that.
So, the future meeting, present something, felt, for the night, I want to make sure I, no action tonight, or going for it.
Well, like, then, uh, certainly, sure, my chance.
Yeah, so, item number eight, council, they're like, take no action. Um, the reason for that, uh, as far as, coming up, we're rolling up the, the, uh, the common, this is why I'm in a, so, when you say, any state, no action, you say, you have, you have, so.
No, there's no other second. Seven. Okay, so, um, item seven, future ten items. What's going?
See, the, 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 we consider the, the, for a forensic audit, of the, uh, market for court official hearing, that different thirty, two thousand nineteen.
I mean, it's great. Then there would be more of this, uh, well, you know, hopefully that would dispel a lot of, uh, rumors and this and that, and make clear to everybody exactly what is happening, what money, this, blah, 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 which is, it's got it, and everyone have the interest they want, of course. Hey, man. So, are, yes, sir. Now, were you, for five, to, to report, back, to report, post, for a forensic audit? Or, you may, be able to, a hundred, you don't have now, do you, for an audit?
No, uh, I would like to, uh, discuss, detective, for forensic audit, with a prior auditor, in the city, Mr. Demater, and, uh, I will go back to the council, whether or not he's there.
Why don't we just go for that, to allow anyone?
Let's do that, too.
Anyone's, uh, a fight, uh, uh.
You do it already.
You know, you know, you're, you're the best. You should have put that one. Just give the job, the ones, individual, not, uh, actually, I think. Yeah, all right, so, here's your.
So, I got, uh, two things, actually, one is for, us to put an application out for one city worker who is responsible for maintaining the guards in downtown area, where the property we have, maintenance, but strictly for that, not to be, uh, build away for anything else used, strictly to be on mower, weed, taking care of the downtown area, you didn't mind the parks, you didn't mind the city, and everyone, that's one. And the other one is for a, a letter of, for a text off, for the chamber. I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Two, right, you agree?
Yes, for the friendship, actually, Stephanie, yes, like.
There was two agenda items, um, that we had requested, one was, uh, the letter, can you hear me?
Yeah, just come in and have, well, they're working, thank you.
Yeah. So, in order, in order for us to be able to, um, provide health services, access, friendship and things, we have to have a letter from the city, giving a permission to the district. So, we're giving the letter, and we're going to have permission to be able to.
Do you serve that, that, do that, or do you need that, or do you need that?
I do, basically, um, yes, sir.
Do we just, do we need to actually put that on the agenda?
Uh, it was proposed to me, that it's based on, based on the agenda, and for the YouTube based on the agenda, that's, yeah.
Well, what I mean is, I don't be necessarily asking on the agenda, that's the will, everyone's okay, but we just give it a, that's, well, that will put on the agenda, we're gonna have a special, can you?
And secondly.
But, what's under that, he would, his hand?
And, and, uh, like, the application, to, to, for, for reasons, that we can, we listen, um, you know.
I have anything else that come back?
You guys can, I have, and, and, uh, it was, uh, sorry, um, those are the two items that are needed in order to be able to actually.
Have that. Of all, probably.
I need, yes, yes, I have to, this is my application.
Okay, yes, ma'am, thank you. You sure, your, your, your? You need to show your, 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 your. Best, yeah.
Well, we need to, we need to workshop, we have to have a workshop, permanent, and we have, yes, get, get, uh, if, for, so, so, I'll say that, 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 first, so we're, we're obviously going to be having workshops, especially means, five, four, next, regular, regularly scheduled, council meeting.
We can have, get, uh, sure, I'm a special, say, the very next meeting, we have, let's take care of this thing. So, we go together, that's the, we have a great, we have a, um, we, we discussed this, for, for the base review, and some documents were presented, a lot of that, the view, um, and also, uh, provide if necessary, we put that on the agenda for approval, for conference, and, and. Okay, thank you, most of those, sir.
Yes.
All right, on there, uh, yes, I have both meeting, I'm sure. You have a wall, you have a wall, everybody, yes, you, chief, there's a wall.
Are you sticking it in there?
Yeah, let's go. In stream.